Welcome back, everybody. I'd like to acknowledge councillor Landers and welcome her to the council. Welcome councillor Landers. It was just in my eyeline, but I also wanted to give a special recognition, tonight is the last night that Ed Riddell will be working with us, so I just wanted to recognise Ed and his time working here in the council for seventeen years, so thank you, Ed. All right, further speakers to the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee report, please. I'd also, I'd like to recognise the state MP for Everton, Mr Tim Mander, in the gallery as well. Further speakers, there being none, councillor Maddick. Now, I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, the Finance Committee, please.
Mister Chair, I move that the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting held on Tuesday the fifteenth of October two thousand and nineteen be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Murphy, that the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting dated Tuesday the fifteenth of October two thousand and nineteen be adopted, is there any debate?
Thank you, Mister Chair. At committee last week, we had one of our regular presentations on net borrowings, investments and funding, and I'll quickly go through a few of the highlights. Typically, the presentation starts with a review of global markets, and probably the key takeout from that is that global growth is subdued, that includes in Europe, the United States and Australia, and even China has had a reduction in growth in their economy, so the outlook isn't great. Obviously, that flows through to Australia, last week or the week before, we saw interest rates or cash rates dropping to seventy-five basis points, which is an all-time low, so the ability of the federal government to stimulate economic activity is certainly starting to get diluted with these very, very low interest rates, it doesn't give them a lot of option to continue to use interest rates to stimulate the economy. From the domestic economy perspective, inflation remains low, wage growth, obviously, as we've all heard, remains subdued, and that obviously flows through to the domestic economy, so there isn't, there is a degree of trepidation, I guess, and people are being fairly careful with the way they spend. In terms of our commodity prices, the trade with China is, while still strong, is expected to moderate over coming months, so that's possibly not a great outlook for the commodity market. Interestingly enough, retail sales for Australia grew in the month of August, with Queensland and the ACT being the top performers in the country. Mind you, the increases in retail sales were extremely modest, so I guess at this stage we need to take a fairly balanced view of that, and interestingly enough, spending in cafes and restaurants was in particular lower. In terms of the Queensland economy, the house prices have started to stabilise, and in some locations, they've obviously started to improve again, but in the context of the whole of Australia, housing affordability in Queensland and in particular Brisbane remains very, very good. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Allen. I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair, I have two petitions, I'm presenting them on behalf of yourself for some traffic improvements on Dawson Parade, Capera.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I have a petition on behalf of Tennyson Ward residents in Vivian Street, calling on Vivian Street to be reduced to forty kilometres per hour.
Lord Mayor.
I have two petitions I'm presenting for the deputy mayor, one relates to a vegetation protection order at twenty-three Macklin Street, Holland Park, and the other relates to a request for traffic calming in Lana Street, Taragindi.
No further petitions? May I please have a resolution?
Thank you, Mister Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Strunk, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review panel order? No one is rising. Councillors, are there any matters of general business? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair, I rise to speak on the LGAQ convention that I attended last week, last weekend, early this week, in Cairns. It was quite an interesting start to the actual convention in that quite a number of flights were delayed or cancelled, the flight that I was on was actually cancelled after they did attempt takeoff, and then for some reason they aborted the takeoff, so we went back to the airport and waited, and then they ended up counting the flights, so that's okay, we managed to get up there eventually, and so Tuesday morning started with the official opening by the Honourable Sterling Hinchcliffe, the Minister for Local Government, Minister for Racing and Minister for Multicultural Affairs, and as we all know by now, the announcement that he made, which was very relevant to all the councils at that, at the conference, of course, and in particular relevance to here in Brisbane City Council, was that CPV was off the table, so that, I have to admit, was met by a round of applause. I did hear this nasty rumour that there was consideration that it was only going to be, that there was going to be CPV for Brisbane City Council only, as opposed to the rest of council, but apparently that didn't go through, so I think we need to thank whoever intervened for making sure that we got the outcome that we deserved. We then had a presidential address by the mayor, Mark Jamison, which was very good, and I do have to at this point say thank you to both mayor Mark Jamison and Greg Hallam as the CEO of LGAQ for the fight that they put up for us, for council, and, you know, they could have quite easily left us out, being we're one of the biggest councils in Australia, but no, they said we're all in or we're not in, so we really appreciate the fact that they took the boat to it.
Councillors, please, allow the speaker to be heard in silence.
We then, we then had a keynote speaker from a professor Ballastantic, and he was introduced as the Nostradamus of the twenty-first century, in that he was the one who had the unique position of the only one who would forecast the outcome of the federal election so correctly, so it was quite interesting. I didn't understand a lot of what he said, because it was very mathematical, and I was never very good at maths, but basically, well, I'm still no good at maths, yes, what he, what he said was, it was all like reading Twitter accounts, like they read, him and his team, millions and millions of posts on Twitter, and the outcome that I got from what he was saying was basically that people don't lie on Twitter as opposed to lying at the polls, so that's why, because he had been following Twitter, he was able to predict that that's what was going to happen, despite what the polls said, so my, yeah, so basically, people will tell all sorts of lies to the polls, but yeah, so that was interesting, I don't know that that's something that I would particularly want to take up as a lifestyle choice, is reading Twitter's comments, but there you go. But he's not only done that, he's done a lot of other stuff as well, and he works with many other councils on different things. And then I also had the absolute honour of being up there with Betty and Yasmin, and we talked about the Red Bench Project, and most of us, the councillors in the chamber, will have a red bench or two in their ward now, this was a project that was thought up by a lady called Betty, who is to mark the domestic violence, and it's a way of making something more of a permanent marker, and I'm so glad that the Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinard said that he got behind this project. We did get guzzumped by Redland Council, unfortunately, with Mayor Karen Williams getting the one in first, but that's okay, we've caught up to her now, and we have a number of them across our ward, so I encourage. Yes, well, they do too, so I encourage, if you do not have a red bench in your ward anywhere at all, you need to certainly talk to your officers about getting one there, they're a great project, and it's a fabulous initiative by Betty, and then carried out with Yasmin and myself and all the fellow councillors, so thank you again, Lord Mayor, for allowing me to be one of the delegates at local government conference in Cairns, and I think that we brought back a good enough result for, to warrant the fact that we went up there, so thank you very much.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mister Chair, listen, I rise to speak on three events that's happened in my ward over the last week and a bit. The first one was the Forest Lake State School fete, and that was, well, we thought maybe there was going to be a bit of a problem, because they were predicting rain on that Saturday from about Thursday before, but thankfully, it didn't, it held off, it didn't rain, I should say, and so, because a lot of work goes into these fetes, as every councillor here knows, the PNCs really are under the pump to raise money, and so they put themselves into a bit of, into a bit of debt, I suppose, to try to pull this thing together, and if it rains, of course, then then it probably goes into the red, but the fete was well-supported by the business groups within my ward, they had sponsorship, so they had enough sponsorship, though, if it had rained, they wouldn't have actually lost any money, so the sponsorship was that good, they had paid for everything before they opened the gates, which was really, really good, so congratulations to Jason, the PNC president there, and Gavin, the coordinator, which undertook the work for this year for the fete. The next one was the Grand Avenue State School trivia night, and so I put my hand up to occupy a table, and that's always a bit of a, bit problematic if you're an elected member. Well, I tell you what, my team, we didn't lose, but we didn't win either, we were sort of in the middle, but everyone sort of expects, expects you to do better than some of the other tables, and, but it's always about the questions, and, but they really mixed it up as well with some other events through the night, so they really did it well, it was well-supported, and they raised quite a lot of money on the night for the Grand Avenue State School, so it was a good, pleasant experience, and, but I prefer other types of games like bingo, where you don't have to know anything, just listen to a number and mark a card. Anyways, the last one was, this was last weekend, with the Breast Cancer Australia fundraiser that was held by the Terraces, which is the other fifty-five village in my ward, one of them in my ward, and it was, I had a really good time, I walked in, I walked into the room, and there were eighty ladies, baby boomers, and I was right at home, because I was the only male, so I had a lot of fun, I had a lot of chats, and lots of cups of tea, and the amount of raffle prizes they had collected right for businesses right around my ward was quite phenomenal, I think everyone went away with a, with a raffle prize, I think, but they raised some really good money for a very worthy cause, and they've done this every year, at least once or twice every year, so it's kudos to them for undertaking this important fundraising for a really great cause, and I'll end my comments here, thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mister Chair, I just give rise to speaking general business about the LGAQ Conference, one hundred and twenty-third LGAQ Conference that was held last week in Cairns, and I was there on behalf of Brisbane City Council, Mister Chairman. Obviously, LGAQ's annual conference is an opportunity for the seventy-seven councils in Queensland to come together, to exchange knowledge, to network, to share information, to look at opportunities for collaboration across our different regions, Mister Chairman, but also to raise important issues that are relevant to local government, not just in our own patch, but across the whole of the state. It was a great programme, once again, and I have to acknowledge and thank the hard work of the staff at LGAQ, who put together these great programmes that are relevant to not just the large South East Queensland councils, but indeed to all the councils from Bullia right through to the coastal councils, and all the way then down into the South East corner, Mister Chairman. On the Monday, I went to a session which was called Ocean Protect, and that was driven around wanting to remove plastic from our waterways, so not just from the Great Barrier Reef, not just from the Brisbane River or our rivers, but from all of our waterways right across the state, Mister Chairman. Obviously, one of the biggest challenges we have is about eighty percent of the plastic that finds its way into our waterways comes from land-based activities, and it was really interesting to hear some of the stories, particularly from some of the smaller rural and regional councils who are struggling with the burdens of the waste levy, because you might think, Mister Chairman, that the waste levy is a good thing, and that it's being warmly embraced by all the councils, but it was a reoccurring theme, it also came up on the second day in the councils forum, about the impacts of the waste levy, and it was really interesting in this Ocean Protect session, where we heard from some of the councils that they have farmers, who are banana farmers, who can't afford to pay to dump the banana planks, you know, those big plastic banana bags that you see that wrap the whole hands of bananas, they can't afford to dump those because of the waste levy, and so what they're doing is they're either burying them on their farms or burning them, because they can't afford, because of the cost associated with the waste levy, they can't actually afford to dump them in the landfill in their local council area, and so the waste levy is having some really perverse outcomes, and quite a few councils talked about the impacts of that, and the fact that the bulk of the funding from the waste levy isn't going back into waste reduction streams, it's not going back into waste initiatives to reduce waste going to landfill, or to support councils to upgrade their facilities, to build waste-to-energy plants, I mean, some four hundred million dollars that's being collected by the state isn't actually being reinvested into these types of facilities to help reduce stuff, so that was a really strong reoccurring theme across those councils that were impacted by the waste levy. Obviously, we, they also took the chance, LGAQ also took the chance to launch their Reef Council's Rescue Plan, which is a really interesting read, obviously, Brisbane City Council's not on the Great Barrier Reef, but we have our own initiatives down here, where we're trying to work with some of our council partners to restore sections of the Brisbane River as part of our Resilient Rivers Programme, and we continue to do that important work. As councillor Marks said, the minister arrived on the Tuesday morning to give a welcome, that's where he announced the changes by the state government to compulsory preferential voting, and I just want to echo and endorse everything that councillor Marks said, it was a great outcome and a real win for local government, that proposal was not supported by anyone in the room, ninety-eight percent of councils across this state said no to it at the special meeting of LGAQ that they had, voting on these proposals, and it really was only our colleagues here on the right-hand side of this chamber who actually supported that proposal, the rest of local government, whether they were independents, liberals, Labor, Conservatives, or the Labor mayors across the state did not want compulsory preferential voting, Mister Chairman, and they were quite ecstatic when the minister made that announcement up there in Cairns. Ballastanic was a really interesting speaker, he spoke about the power of data, and the big data pool that's out there, and the power that you can harness in that, as councillor Marks said, he picked Brexit, he picked Trump, he picked the federal election almost down to the seats in the federal election, he's picked Melbourne Cup winners, all using data and statistics, and pumping that through these special algorithms that he's developed with his students at the university, and creating these algorithms that actually then are able to predict a whole range of things, based primarily in the case of the federal election, as councillor Marks said, on some two million tweets that he had collected and filtered out duplicates and retweets and things like that, and was able to distill that down to actually creating a position where he said that Scott Morrison was going to win. There was a number of panel sessions, in particular, Mayor Chambers, Rachel Chambers, who spoke, she's from the North Burnet, she spoke about the power of data that her council is using to inform roads and road infrastructure, capturing the information about the amount of usage depending on the type of land zoning along certain roads, if you think Brisbane's got a large road network, she's got tens of thousands of kilometres of roads versus our six thousand kilometres of roads, they have large pieces of farm infrastructure which carry, which move large amounts of stock feed on those roads, and they obviously have to maintain those roads and decide with their limited budget where they invest their money, and they're using data to help inform their investments as well, Mister Chairman. Councillor Marks spoke about the Red Bents Project, and I just want to acknowledge the way that councillor Marks was able to present that to the whole audience, and I think it was really well-received by the four or five hundred delegates that were in the room at the time, Mister Chairman, about a really positive way that our communities can acknowledge the damage that's done by domestic violence, and the opportunity to help raise awareness and start those conversations. As I said, the council forum for SEQ really focused around the waste levy and the opportunities that come from the waste levy, if we can get some investment by the state government, working with councils, particularly those larger councils, to help find ways to create a circular economy, and that is one of the other big challenges for local governments, it's all right to say we need to divert waste from landfill, but where do we put it and how do we use it is one of the big challenges, not just for the South East corner, but across the whole of the state, some of these councils are creating stockpiles of plastic bottles or glass, and they need to find avenues to reuse that, and it's really important, obviously, that we're facilitating that with the funding that comes from the waste levy, and I just thank once again the council for the opportunity to go and represent them at LGAQ.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak about a few different things, including the Cleaner Suburbs Award, petition handling processes at council, Movies in the Park, and hopefully, I'll have time to discuss the new Local Government and City of Brisbane Act changes, but I might save that for a whole ten minutes next week. Firstly, recently, the Cleaner Suburbs Awards were held at City Hall, and I attended, a number of very hard-working groups in my ward were nominated, many were finalists, and I particularly want to acknowledge the hard work of Carolyn Vincent, who works in my ward and Maruk Ward, she is a prolific rubbish picker-upper, she helps make our suburbs beautiful, she won an award last year, and I nominated her in the councillor category this year, and unfortunately, she was pipped at the post by the eleven-year-old company entrepreneur, who was, I must say, a worthy winner as well, but she does a wonderful job helping keep our suburbs clean and inspiring others to keep our suburbs clean. So does OCA, and I'm really sorry that OCA weren't acknowledged for their hard work, out in my ward and in the southwestern corridor, the only people looking after Oxley Creek are our bush carers and groups working through OCA. This council neglects terribly the health of the waterway corridor, and despite the fact that there's apparently a one hundred million dollar project which has been underway for two years, not a cent, not a cent, has been spent on fixing up the health of the waterway corridor. However, OCA do a wonderful job supporting the health of our parklands and creek areas through the Oxley Creek catchment, and I thank them. But most importantly, this year, Yorongah State School, who are already a council award-winning active travel school, won the Clean Schools Award for two thousand and nineteen. I was delighted to work on a project with them this year, where we used some of the local funds to purchase a number of helpful pieces of litter equipment to support the kids in their litter activities around the school, that includes litter pickers with dinosaur heads, which was recommended by Paul in the waste team, and I thank him for that, and a range of lightweight bins for them to put things into as they're carrying them around the school, and I was delighted to donate that up to the school to assist with their activities during the year. They've also done a number of things through the school council, and had to present to the PNC to get change in the school, so for example, plastic straws at school have now been banned, so I just want to say congratulations to the waste management team at Yorongah State School, they're an amazing, very multicultural, very diverse school, who do a wonderful job, not only with active school travel, but also in this wonderful initiative to help our environment with the waste reduction initiatives at the school, they were very, very deserving winners, and I just want to say thank you to the parents, the teachers and the staff at the school who support the children in this important work. Now, I've read a very interesting news article in my local paper today, and I'm a bit shocked at the blatant pork barreling by this Lord Mayor, you would think, you would think that a brand-new Lord Mayor with no profile in the city might be interested in funding initiatives fairly across the city of Brisbane, perhaps in an effort to say, I'm here, Brisbane, I'm here for all suburbs, I'm here for all residents, I'm here for all ratepayers, not this new Lord Mayor, no, this new Lord Mayor announced in the budget that he was going to fund Movies in the Park out of council's budget, which is how they were funded back when I started, almost twelve years ago, and then that got cut by Newman, and then he cut the SIF, and, you know, then he buggered up everything else, and then he raced off down to George Street and did a brilliant job down there, too. This new Lord Mayor, though, is heading the same way, he has announced in the budget this year, funding for Movies in the Park out of the capital allocation of the budget, rather than local ward funds. Now, as councillor Strunk has found out, and I thank him for sharing this information locally, thirty-four movies have been funded with almost three hundred thousand dollars in funding, none of them are in the southwestern suburbs, so that's the area I represent, the area councillor Strunk represents, and the area that councillor Griffiths represents, so, you know, dozens of suburbs miss out altogether, and then you look at where they are going, so let me read the list, Marchant Ward gets six Movies in the Park, yeah, good, keep going with the pork barreling, I love the cheers, you'll get a special mention in the end, Doe Boy Ward gets four, LNP Ward, Callum Vale gets four, LNP Ward, Paddington gets four, desperately marginal, LNP Ward, Cooperoo gets four, desperately marginal, LNP Ward, Deegan gets two, sorry councillor Cassidy, desperately marginal, ALP Ward, and Winner Manley gets four. So, out of a total of thirty-four movies, I can see six are going to Labor oppositions, of course, there's nothing in Tennyson Ward, I mean, you know, why would there be any money spent in Tennyson Ward, because, you know, that just doesn't happen, I mean, yeah, so I just want to thank the Lord Mayor for his generosity, not only in Tennyson Ward, zero, but in the southwestern suburbs, zero, and generally, across the opposition and non-aligned councillors, zero, so, you know, you know, Lord Mayor, I stood up and said I'd work with you, but when you give us nothing to work with, the only thing left that I can do is go out and tell people what you have done. When you blatantly pork-barrel like this by providing funds only in LNP wards to prop up marginal LNP councillors, that is pork-barreling, people understand absolutely what it's all about, and you will be caught out when you do this kind of thing. Next, petition processes. I am disgusted that councillor Howard stood up and spoke for me earlier today, I want to make it clear on the record that she does not speak for me, I want to make it clear on the record that what I was speaking about today related specifically to the incident where council officers failed to consult with me, contrary to council policy, went out and bitchement up to the fences of residents without talking to them, without notifying them and without consulting with them, that is wrong, that was disgusting, that was letting down Brisbane residents, and it is appalling, appalling, that you want to stand up here and somehow blame me, you did this, your team.
Councillor, please, councillor, please address all comments through the chair.
Through you, Mister Chairman, you did this, your team.
No, not like that, I didn't do it.
That's exactly how you do it.
I didn't do it, you will address councillor Howard in third person, please.
Through you, Mister Chairman, councillor Howard and her team did this, and it is not respectful to the residents in the ward that I represent, and when I raised this with the divisional manager of the area responsible, she wrote back to me and said the following, please be assured that staff have been informed to always follow the appropriate policy and guidelines. Well, as we've heard today in councillor Howard's own words, they didn't, and she apologised belatedly, a year almost after this incident happened, after an independent review clearly shows that the officers didn't do the right thing, not only did they not do the right thing, I had to force this council to even review it, and then, the worst part, if this had been in an LNP ward, it would have got fixed up, but what does the LNP do? They bring up the fact to this council for a vote earlier today, their mistake, without fixing it, shame on you, shame on you, this should have been fixed, these people should have got curb and channel in their street, not bitchement to their front fence, and let me say, this councillor Howard, footpaths are the benefit of curb and channel, it separates the road carriageway from people's front fence, and it gives them a safe place to walk, which is not on the road.
Point of order to you, councillor Hammond.
Just want to say that councillor Johnson is actually misleading the chamber, she's promoted a Yorongah movie night in her ward on Friday, October twelfth.
Thank you, yeah, well, that's not how you do points of order.
Yeah, and that's how bright councillor Hammond is, I'm paying for that out of I'm paying for that out of the community funds, not out of the budget.
Come on, move on.
But there you go, I'm glad she's reading what I'm doing in my ward, spy, 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 that's how the LNP works.
Well, I don't think someone reading a Facebook post is spying. Can you please stay on the topics with which you inform the room?
It's not a Facebook post, it's not a Facebook post, but let me be clear, this is where the LNP want to try and muddy the waters. She's getting six Movies in the Park in her ward, funded by the Lord Mayor out of budget funds, and I'm getting zero, absolutely zero. I have to fund now not only Movies in the Park, every community event, every footpath now, we have to fund whatever else we've got to fund out of these funds, and guess what? This LNP Lord Mayor is pork-barreling and dadding the residents in Stevens Lane, Yorongah. So let me be clear, councillor Howard, the benefit of having curb and channel is you get a defined footpath.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just rise to speak about the Brighton Roosters Junior Rugby League Club. They held their annual trophy presentation day on Sunday just gone, which was a week delayed because of the rain we had the weekend before, which was, of course, very welcome to a club like the Brighton Roosters, which is, as most of our sporting clubs, completely volunteer-run, and have been feeling the extreme pressure of high water bills over the last few months. So they're certainly appreciative of the rain and appreciative that they were able to reschedule that to Sunday just gone. I was on hand to help present some trophies to some of those fantastic junior teams, particularly the under-13 side, which have just won their second premiership on the hop, and this year did not drop a single game, and they were coached by the fantastic and energetic Dennis Trenery, who is also on the committee down there, and working with and alongside Dylan Slater, the current president, and Tammy Slater, Dylan's wife, who's also on the committee, and so many other volunteers down there. They have been able to secure, for the first time in my community's history, a BRL side for next season, which will give, and this is in partnership with the Redcliffe Dolphins, which will give the club the opportunity to have players play from a under-six junior level right through to seniors at the Brighton Roosters, and now have a Brighton Roosters BRL side with the potential to feed players into an in-trust side at the Redcliffe Dolphins and potentially an NRL side as well, and hopefully a second NRL side team for Brisbane in the near future. So I want to congratulate the Brighton Roosters on an amazing amount of work to get them to this point, from previous committees and previous president Desley Staines through to Dylan Slater, as I mentioned. This is a small suburban NRL club that has a fantastic history in our local community, and they are really kicking goals now, and I'm very excited to be able to support their bid to get into BRL and support them now that they have got there, to make sure this is an amazing success, not only for a community sports club on a council lease site, but also one that supports the broader community as well. So congratulations, Brighton Roosters.
Further speakers? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the Queensland Academy of Science, Math and Technology, and give you an update about the INSS Games. So last week, I met with the school principal, with some transport officers from Brisbane City Council out at Quozmat, and it's very interesting, Chair, that school population is going to grow to about 1,300 within two years, and it's currently about 800, so it's going to really find itself in some growing pains. So it was really refreshing to get out there and meet with the school, who has spent a lot of time with their PNC doing a school travel strategy. So I went out, spoke with the principal about their traffic management plan, and council transport officers are very supportive of bus options, promoting active travel options, designated drop-off pickup area that's being installed, and adjusting the school zones. So I just wanted to give a big shout-out to Doug, Anna Maria, and the other PNC members who have spent so much time doing that. And Chair, if you'll indulge me, I just want to give you a little update about the INSS Games, and you may remember last week, Chair, I spoke about Jack Island from St Lucia, who trains 40 hours a week down at the UQ Pool. Now, Jack had a very, very busy swim programme, and I'm going to tell you how he went. Jack and his men's freestyle relay team not only won gold in their 4x50, 4x100, and 4x200 relays, they did so in Paris Swimming World Record Time Chair. Jack and his mixed relay team also took another silver. In his individual events, Jack won silver in the 400 individual medley, bronze in the 200 free, and that's his selection event for the recent world Paris Swimming Champs in London. And he had a fabulous week with winning three golds, two silver, one bronze. So Chair, thank you very much for that, and congratulations to Jack and all of the other INSS competitors.
Further speakers? There being none, I declare the meeting closed.